Okay, good. Calling the meeting to order. I've got everybody on screen except for Matt Duncan, but he's there and I'm missing you McDermott here. But we are going to call the meeting to order, so I'm just going to remind you, which I maybe haven't lately. This meeting is live streamed. So be on your best behavior. Anyway, we'll start with a moment of reflection. Okay, thank you. We don't have anything to add to the agenda?
We have one in camera item for legal advice.
Right.
One additional item.
So we have one additional item for in-camera session with regards to legal advice. And other than that, we don't really have anything, right? Perfect. So I need a motion to confirm the agenda with that one addition. Moved by Counselor Callum, second by Counselor Wilhelm. Any comments? Those in favor? Carried. Perfect. Okay, consent agenda. We have items. Five point one to five point one four. In the minutes from the two thousand and twenty-one council minutes. Does anyone want to see anything pulled for discussion? Not seeing any hands? Todd?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. I think with regards to the consent agenda, there are a few areas that we could probably do something with. First item five point seven. I think there's something there that we should ask questions about at least. And item five point one two, I think there's an opportunity for a report on this and its implications as well. And then I think with regards to some of the other items, five point eight and five point thirteen, it might be interesting for our council to express support for those items. So I got four things there today.
Okay. So can we move those down to?
Hey, Jim.
Darrell?
I actually wouldn't mind pulling five point one eleven or five point eleven.
Okay, so I gotta write these down because now we've got a bunch. Five point seven. And you wanted five eleven?
Yes.
And you wanted five twelve, Todd? And five thirteen? And five point seven, I got five point eight. Was it five point eight, Todd? Okay. Okay, we are going to move those down to seven.
We'll move it down to eight council reports. How's that? That work?
We'll do that after our tender result. Okay, so I have a motion to proceed the consent agenda items five point one to five point four with the exception of five point seven, five point eight, five point one one, five point one two, five point one three, and approve the March fourth, two thousand and twenty-one council minutes. Have I missed anything anyone wants pulled? Don't see any. Do I have a mover and a seconder? Counselor Duncan, seconded by Counselor Hurley. Those in favor? Let's carry. Perfect. Okay, we're going to move on. Just before I go any further, you can make your declaration of baccunary interest now or at any point in time through the meeting. And we will move on to public meetings, hearing and some delegations. And we don't have any. So we will move on to staff reports. Seven point one one job evaluation policy. And I see we have not you McDermott on screen now, so. And who's doing that, just out of curiosity?
I think it's Jess.
I think Jess wrote the Jess wrote the report, so. We'll get Jess up there right shortly. Okay, there's Jessica.
Through the warden and members of, oh, sorry.
We're good. You were, I could hear you, so we're good to go with your report.
Perfect. Through the warden and members of council, good morning, everyone. Today I'm going to go through the policy changes for the job evaluation policy. I would take the materials as read, but I will share some highlights from the report. The job evaluation policy was last updated in two thousand and eighteen. While the policy is more recent than most at the county, some changes are required to better meet industry standards, provide clear direction on roles and responsibilities, and update to complete the county's current job evaluation program. As of right now, all Coned County job descriptions are updated and the two thousand and twenty job evaluation has been completed. Because of this work, it is necessary to update the job evaluation policy to outline clear expectations of how this process will work moving forward. I conducted benchmarking of five policies from five different municipalities, including the lower tiers. All changes in this policy are supported through benchmarking. I'd like to call attention to a key implement, a key change implemented that was informed by our benchmarking, which was moving away from employees driving the job evaluation process and placing the responsibility on the manager to drive and lead this overall process. While an employee may have input at the end of the day, it is the manager who approves of any changes to the job description. In addition, the policy provides clear roles and responsibilities of all parties. This was missing in the last, leading to frustration and confusion. The responsibility of viewing of reviewing the job description on an annual basis lies with the manager. But a fulsome review will take place every four years with HR-led involvement. So this concludes the overall highlights from the report. Are there any questions?
Thanks, Jessica. Questions for Jessica on this report? Counselor Eich.
Jessica, I have two. I see where you stroked out that if a new position is implemented, the county council has no say in it. On job number one, you stroked out, so we don't get to say if we have a new position. And down at the bottom here, and continue.
So for, if you wanted me to answer the first question, or did you want to, okay?
No, no, answer the first one.
Okay, thank you for your question, counselor. For that answer, all of the positions are approved prior to budget. So when the new incumbent comes into the role, the manager will look over the position in the mandate and send it to human resources, and then they will send it to the external, the external consultant, and they determine the band and the placement. And then afterwards, the manager and the employee sit down at the performance review to see if there are any fundamental changes that need to be reassessed by the external. But council will be made aware during budget review that there will be a new position and potentially a new incumbent for that role.
And then, and then continuing in the job evaluation process, you have a blue, a little blue word there that says occur. Do you know what I mean? It's just before the fourth one. It says salary adjustments will occur once the external job consultant has all the required paperwork. I believe you mean salary adjustments may occur.
Okay, yes, we will add that in, thank you.
We don't have to take the consultants and say we will. We say we may raise that person. We have to discuss that. I don't know if that's the proper termination. But I think those two points are just, just a word, but will and may are two totally different things. Will is a definite and may is our decision. So I kind of read through this. I noticed there's a lot of reduction in there, a lot of stuff taken out. So I don't know if it'll get passed today or not, or it's probably just for, for us to look at.
Yeah, we can definitely add that word into the policy.
Council's thoughts on that word, may or will? Do you want to see may? Hands up for may. Looks like it's going to be may, Jessica.
Okay, we will add that into reflect.
And that's fine. Other questions? Counselor Katzenberg.
So just further to Counselor Eich's questions, I want to make sure I understand. It is, this policy will structure our practice such that council will understand and learn about new positions that are added to the org chart during budget. Perhaps there are other occasions over the course of the year where something urgent comes up or changes. But council will not necessarily, or seemingly what's implied here, won't see information about the job description. They won't see information about the job evaluation results coming from the external consultant. And so the notion that may versus should might be moot because if we don't see any of this, this is all sort of a process that unfolds because council gave its blessing to a new position. Then why would we concern ourselves with may versus should? That implies the process is sort of automated. And all council's role is to say yes at budget time or at other extreme times when perhaps there's an urgent need. So can you clarify, is that the intent of this policy?
Sure, actually, I'll jump in here, but thank you, Jessica, and thank you for the question, Mayor Casenberg. And so with regards to the policy, at the end of the day, job evaluation is separate. Council again is our overseers, but for the nitty-gritty day-to-day work, so if a job goes to job evaluation, this is outside really the hands of internal staff. So what we're trying to do is really separate the process. I do believe that may is the correct term because a job goes to job evaluation does not mean that it will automatically go up. So that is correct. That is an incorrect word. And with regards to the positions, so council will see any new position come through in the budget as well before we post the position, it will be coming to council as well, just as a, as a heads up, here's the position, here's what's included in the job description. And then that's how also council will be involved in terms of what jobs are being filled at the county.
Okay. Other questions? Don't see any. So we did make a little tweak there. So the word will occur is changed to may. So I have a motion here. Perth County Council receives the job evaluation policy report. And the council endorsed the recommendations to the job evaluation policy. Do I have a mover and a seconder? Moved by Counselor Wilhelm, seconded by Counselor Aggots. Last chance for comments or questions. Those in favor of that motion? That's carried. Okay, we're moving on. Next, New Horizons for Seniors Accessibility and Paramedic Program, and that will be Mr. Mike. Or is that Rachel? Rachel?
Do a dual presentation.
Oh, yeah. Take it away, Rachel.
Perfect. Well, good morning, County Council, through the warden. I'll be presenting this report along with Chief Adair today. It's a little bit of a good news story for council. In the fall, staff applied for the New Horizons for Seniors Program funding. So this is a funding stream through the federal government that focuses on enhancing the quality of life for seniors across the country and in local communities. So staff took it upon themselves to apply for a two-phase project that would include enhancing the accessibility program along with the Perth County Paramedic Services Mobile Integrated Health Team. And with that, I'll quickly provide an overview of the accessibility portion, and then I'll pass it over to Chief Adair to do the paramedics. And so in terms of the funding for accessibility, this funding is really going to enable the accessibility program to deliver inclusive community senior training. So this will be delivered in a two-pronged approach. So it'll include training from the Alzheimer's Society, along with training from a consultant that will focus more broadly on age-related disabilities. And so included in these training sessions will be business owners, service providers, municipal employees, really with the goal of creating an inclusive and diverse community across the county. And so with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions at the end of the report, but I'll pass it to Chief Adair to speak to the paramedics funding portion.
Hi, thank you, Rachel. It's Mike here through the warden. So with our half of the good news story, we'll be looking at how we might use technology to better connect some of the seniors in our community paramedic program. And so we'll be exploring options both with our IT department and doing some blueprint print designing over the next few weeks to determine how, what that's going to look like. We also have an opportunity to use a portion of this to work with our in-house or our contracted psychologist to address, to help us develop a program and to address mental wellness aspects of what we're doing with our seniors. So we're going to be putting some of the portion of that money towards that as well. So those are the two things that we're going to be doing with this, and certainly happy to report back when we figure out exactly what that's going to look like.
Okay, thanks, Mike and Rachel. Questions for either Rachel or Mike? Don't see any. I got a quick one, Mike. So a lot of this has to do with accessibility as well, right? Would there be any way that they might down the road, look at some of the access, transportation services, like the mobility bus service and stuff to help in on this as well or not? We're not there yet, but possibly.
Yeah, with this, with this, it's, I think for us, it was on the application was more specific to programming in isolation for seniors in terms of the mobile integrated health and the community paramedic side of things. It's a good question, and I should defer to Justin if we could bring him in or have a conversation there future when it comes to the mobility bus side of things.
Just a thought, because you know, for those seniors is probably the key thing to stop the isolation, right?
Absolutely.
Any questions, comments, other? Rhonda? Counselor Aggots?
Just to comment, just so everyone knows, I, ago, we did an age-friendly community study in Perth County. I'm not sure if everyone's aware of that. I just thought it's been a long time since we did that. I didn't even tell you how many years ago, but it was quite a while ago.
I can't honestly say I've seen that report or study. We'll maybe try and get our hands on that. Okay, I have a motion here. Perth County Council receives the New Horizons and Seniors, First Seniors Program Accessibility and Paramedic Community Outreach Program Report for Information. Moved by Counselor McKenzie, seconded by Counselor McDermott. Last chance for questions or comments. Those in favor? Carried. Thank you. So next, we're going to move on to economic development. And we have the PC Connect report coming up next. And we get Maggie on the screen here, we'll be good to go. Morning, Maggie. You're good to go.
Awesome. Thank you. Good morning, council. So through the warden, I'd like to provide a very brief summary of the PC Connect February update. I'll also be providing a brief verbal update on the mass vaccination centers and the considerations that we have taken to enable residents to reach these locations using PC Connect. So I am pleased to confirm that our brand-new buses hit the road earlier this week. So our new fleet has been fully decked, deckled with front, rear, and side branding, which not only better identifies our service for riders, but it also acts as functioning marketing to help spread awareness throughout the county and build our brand recognition. So to accompany the launch of our new fleet, we also rolled out new schedule enhancements that were designed to better serve our riders. So the minor adjustments were a result of the operational data that we collected and will contribute to enhancing our service efficiency. So we will continue to monitor our routes and schedules closely in order to gather rider feedback and data in order to make any further enhancements required. So in terms of ridership, we experienced significant growth in the month of February. So following the provincial shutdown and our ridership decline in January, PC Connect saw sixty-two percent increase in ridership in February. So in February, Route A served a total of seven, seventy-three passengers, and Route B served thirteen passengers for a total of eighty-six rides. So we have continued to place a hold on all of our paid marketing, and we are working with HPPH in order to determine a safe milestone to resume our advertising efforts. So we have prepared a rider survey that will be available as a hard copy for riders to fill out while riding on PC Connect. So this survey has been designed to capture more information on our passengers' purpose of travel as well as their preferred travel times and destinations. So we are looking forward to having this data in order to better understand how our service is being leveraged, which will better influence both our marketing and operational approaches moving forward. So due to the pandemic and our delay in state and inability to market, the budget has been readjusted to reallocate unspent funding in future years. So just moving into a brief vaccination update. I'll also bring in Justin and Mike, if that's okay, just to help field questions. But so following our initial discussion in the last county council meeting, we have connected with a variety of our stakeholders such as Voyago, CEMC, HPPH, Social Services, and our paramedic service in order to determine the feasibility and demand for the service for our PC Connect service at the mass vaccination centers. So with the service as it is today, both of our routes A and B currently provide access to the Mitchell Community Center as well as a connection at the terminal to Stratford Rotary Complex through Stratford Transit. So we are confident that we'll be able to add the additional mass vaccination centers within the county as needed while making minimal impacts or disruptions for our current riders. So we are looking forward to gathering more information from the HPPH regarding the specifics of the longer-term plans, such as the frequency and timing at these mass vaccination centers. However, we have initiated the process to set up bus stop agreements at these centers. And we're working with our service provider to confirm our route timing and schedule changes so that we are ready to implement these changes as efficiently as possible. So it is really important, of course, for all of our residents to have access to the vaccine. And we are very hopeful that PC Connect can help minimize the potential barrier that could deter people from doing so. So that is our brief update, and we welcome any questions that you may have.
Questions for Maggie? Counselor Aggots?
So in regards to dropping people off for their needles, so we'll just drop them off, and then when the route comes back, they'll stop there again and pick people up again, so they'll have to find their own way home in between, or how is? I'm just not getting all the logistics of that.
Yeah, so through the warden, at the end of the day, it's a public transportation service, and it's not going to be the most efficient resource for people to get to their vaccines. So although it will be another tool in the toolbox for those that are transit-dependent, there will be hours of waiting in between your vaccine appointment for the bus to return, if the bus returns at all, depending on the time of your appointment. So although it is a viable resource, and it's great that we can stop there, and maybe we have been working with social services as well to potentially encourage using the service one way in partnership with our local taxi services, et cetera. So, yeah, as you said, the logistics is not, not going to, we can't change our service to be going there and back consistently to work with the timing, but again, yeah, another tool in the toolbox that will hopefully help those that are transit-dependent to get to their appointment.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Don't see any hands. I have a quick question for you, Maggie. So I meant to call you and I forgot, just kind of got tied up in too many meetings. There was an announcement about money for public transportation. The government threw out a bunch of money, and I'm thinking that was a couple or three weeks ago. Was that strictly for city-type buses, or was there any chance that this service might get a little bit of funding out of that?
Yes, great. We actually haven't heard anything. We have reached out to the CT team, just inquiring on whether any of that money will filter down to us. But yeah, unfortunately, we haven't heard whether we'll be getting any of that extra funding.
Okay, thanks. Last chance for questions. I don't see any hands. I have a motion. Perth County Council receives the PC Connect February Update Report for Information. Moved by Counselor Callum and seconded by Counselor Katzenberg. Those in favor? And that is carried. Thank you, Maggie.
Thank you.
And next, we have Justin, manager of economic development, and he's going to give us his recovery report. And yeah, there's Justin. So you're ready, Justin, we're good to go.
Great, thank you, Warden H. and members of council, and actually also joined by Ashley Brockobank, our tourism officer, who was you know, very critical in delivering these programs that we were able to deliver through our TIO Regional Relief and Recovery Fund dollars. So I'm joined by Ashley, and she will also be around to answer any questions. So this report serves as a summary of our activities and initiatives that were funded through our Regional Relief and Recovery Fund grant that we received through Fed Dev Ontario in TIO. We had brought forward a report back in July on a rough outline, our, our plan to spend the funds to support local tourism businesses. Since that time, the tourism sector, public health guidelines, and directions from Fed Dev themselves had changed a number of times, as, as did our programming. So Fed Dev had originally scheduled for all the funds to be spent by the end of the year, December thirty-first. But they had modified that deadline to February twenty-eighth. Just to reflect that, the very changing landscape with regards to promoting tourism during periods of lockdown and when interregional travel was being discouraged, so so just remember that. The report outlines the programs and initiatives that the funding supported. The program, these programs represented a balance of indirect assistance to businesses in forms of PPE. For example, in our recovery and reopening kits, which represented money staying in our economy, money that businesses didn't have to outlay, as well as bolstering revenues of struggling businesses through purchase of gift cards that were used in other promotions, vouchers. The program also outlines a number of creative marketing campaigns and initiatives that were aimed at encouraging local spending and the expansion of some of the traditional marketing activities that we would normally undertake. So these were all, these marketing campaigns were focused on driving that regional hyper-local spending, hyper local traveler. As you know, that became vitally important during the pandemic and especially with, with restrictions in place. I won't spend too much time going over the initiatives in detail. They are there in the report in terms of the number of businesses that each supported, the engagement levels they received, the values of gift cards that were purchased from various promotions. I would like to draw council's attention to a few of these campaigns, just to highlight the impact that this grant and the programs that we were able to deliver with it were, or had. So one example of this was the takeaway-to-getaway promotion, which promoted, this involved partnering overnight stays from accommodators with restaurants during the lockdown period after Christmas when, when restaurants were attempting to supplement their income with takeout orders to keep some revenue coming in. We heard from accommodators that these vouchers that we were able to purchase from them were some of the only forms of assistance they'd received, having been ineligible for many provincial and federal government programs. So it was really a nice boost that they appreciated. And just one anecdotal story, we heard from a bakery store owner who had had a customer stop in on their way through town and had won a the previous week, they, or a few weeks prior, they'd been to a restaurant and spun our Take the Wheel pledge, or sorry, Take the Wheel campaign. Won a gift card, and that had actually been the catalyst for return visit to Perth County and a whole day of spending within the local economy. So just one of the, you know, anecdotal stories of the impact. And then kind of a more tangible example I'd like to share is our Take the Pledge campaign. So this was our promotion that ran before Christmas time, offering encouraging residents to take the pledge to spend seventy percent of their holiday shopping locally. Total of five hundred and sixty-six residents who did take the pledge. And then when you look at the average Canadian spent around eleven hundred dollars on holiday shopping in two thousand and twenty, it's not hard to kind of draw a line between the, the impact of, you know, eleven hundred dollars, seventy percent of that, and five hundred and sixty-six residents directing that spending locally, you know, that total is over four hundred and thirty directing that spending locally, you know, that total is over four hundred thirty thousand dollars. So while it's not directly, you know, it's not a direct correlation, it definitely did help to keep that money locally and was a very successful program. So that really concludes the update. Does it mention more details on specific programs are in the report, but happy to, any questions?
Thanks, Justin. And good morning, Ashley. Questions for either Justin or Ashley? Seeing as we have Ashley on the line. Not seeing any on the screen. I'm not seeing any here. Counselor Aggins, there's a hand.
Got a question, just more of a comment. Very well done. You did a great job of bringing people to the community and coming up with different ways and ideas and for all your initiatives because you've done a lot of great things here for our businesses in our community. So I just want to say thanks.
Thanks, Counselor Aggins. And yeah, our economic development team has done a great job through all the pivots and keeping things going. And I read somewhere we're doing another survey here sometime down the road. Any idea when that's going to take place?
Yeah, so we are planning to roll that over the next, I would say, couple of weeks max. It is something, you know, given the various stages of the pandemic and how things have changed in discussions about, you know, potential third ways, we want to make sure that we're hearing from business community now so that we're well prepared to deal with any changes and restrictions that may come down the road.
Thank you. No other questions or comments? When that survey does get done, I know when you did the first one, that was a great survey. And I know there was a little drop off in the second, but people were getting a little surveyed out. But it has been a while since we've been one. I know the Western Ontario Wardens were pretty keen to have a look at some of those first numbers. So perhaps we may end up passing that along again because it pretty well reflects the whole area that's mostly rural. Anyway, I have a motion here. Perth County Council receives the TIAO slash Fed Dev Regional Relief and Recovery Fund report for information. Moved by Counselor Aggins, Second, but Counselor McKenzie. All in favor? And that is carried. Thank you very much. Thanks, Justin and Ashley. And we shall move on to corporate services and that would be Sean, I believe, is doing the report on the notice of intent at Minfee.
Warden, through you and to you, the council, good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today on this report. The report essentially a file from a report that was presented to council back in November regarding the potential for cost recovery for the county's forestry program. The, just a summary of that report, overall, the recommendation was because the program is benefited the county in general, a full cost recovery model was not recommended. However, an opportunity to recover some of the administrative costs associated with the program is identified in potentially implementing a administrative fee with the submission of a notice of intent. And staff recommended that a fee of fifty dollars be sufficient to cover the administrative costs associated with that process. From that report, council directed staff to solicit feedback from Marvin Smith, the county's forestry bylaw enforcement officer. And he replied with the following comments. He feels that NOI is our tremendous benefit to the county for the, their impact on the efficient enforcement of the bylaw and their vast improvement over years past when no NOI was required. And essentially, bylaw enforcement would have no idea basically when and where logging activity was happening unless they happened upon it or somebody reported it. And due to these benefits, he feels that the process should be as inexpensive and as simple as possible. And so his overall recommendation would be not to implement a administrative fee. I just wanted to note also that the NOI is a good benefit to landowners and logging contractors as well because it's an easy way to demonstrate compliance with the bylaw. And it essentially mitigates any interruption should logging activity be reported to the county. If council did decide to go ahead with an administrative fee for the submission of a notice of intent, it would form part of section six of that bylaw, which relates to all the requirements for the submission of an NOI. And that section enforced with penalties under section eleven in the bylaw and that's already established. And then the fee itself, so the amount would be added to Schedule A of the fees and services by law that would have been passed back in January. That's everything I wanted to highlight in the report and I'm happy to receive any questions at this time.
Okay, questions? Counselor Wilhelm?
Not a question, but a comment. I'm glad to see that we got our report back from Marvin. And I think that tree cover is very important to Perth County and I think anything we do to try and promote it and any administrative or less administrative we put in, the better. So I would like to see us follow Marvin's recommendation and less than five thousand dollars isn't much to collect. And I think we spend more than that by quite a bit to try and keep tree covers. So I would just like to follow Marvin's recommendation.
Other comments? Counselor Hurley?
Yeah, this was my concerns when this came up as well and I'll echo what Counselor Wilhelm said there. Let's go with what Marvin has here. People seem to be on the ball here and work with it. Just keep it simple and quick and a little bit per chasing. It's nice to see that we are doing our due diligence and doing coverage and, no, let's keep it the way it is. Thanks.
Counselor McKenzie, you had your hand up.
Well, I just agree with the other two comments. I guess my concern was, and from time to time, you see in Marvin's reports where he was contacting to see if this applied or not. And if you're going to have to pay fifty bucks or whatever to have his opinion on whether it applied or not, chances are you're not going to ask. So yeah, I think, I think it's good and you got to use a bit of common sense with this.
Okay, Sean, I see you raising your hand.
Yeah, just through the warden, I just wanted to comment on that, Counselor McKenzie, that it would just be for the submission of the notice of intent. So just to call Marvin to check, we weren't implying to this that a fee would apply to that. That would still be exactly the same. That wouldn't be impacted at all.
Excellent. That's good.
Other questions? Comments? So in all honesty, we don't actually need a bylaw to follow or a motion to accept is the recommendation because right now there are no charges. So all I need is a motion to receive the notice of intent at Minfee follow-up report for information. Moved by Counselor Casenberg, Second, but Counselor Wilhelm. Those in favor? Carry. So that stays the way it is. And we're going to move on to tender results. Eha. And Bill Wilson's going to come on for this. So far, we're still getting positive results, but the prices are getting closer. Okay, I've got John and I see Bill's name. I just haven't seen his face. And there's Bill. Gone here, gone back. Good morning, Bill. Good morning, John. We're ready for your report, Bill, on the tender results. And I'm not sure if you're going to give that or your sidekick there is, but what do you think?
Yeah, I think I'll take a crack at this one. Thank you, Warden, and good morning, council. The first one on the agenda here as far as tender results go is the cold-in-place recycling for Perth Line thirty-three, that portion of the reconstruction project. So Perth Line thirty-three from the city of Stratford Limits, Easterly to Perth Road one oh seven. We issued tenders for the recycling portion of that project. There were five plant takers and three vendors submitted bids for this job. They're tabled in the report in front of you there. The low bid excluding HST was Lavus Contracting. We have, and I'm sure council's aware, that worked with Lavus quite extensively over the last many years for cold-in-place recycling throughout the county road network. The budget, overall budget for the project is two point one five million. But pertaining to this cold-in-place recycling work, we have expected a budget around seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. So the low bid is well within that budget allotment and yeah, if there's any further questions on that item, John or myself are here to answer.
Okay, thanks, Bill. Questions for Bill or John? I think that's pretty straightforward. Not seeing any. I have a motion. The Perth County Council receives the tender results two thousand twenty-one dash oh three one dash oh five. Perth Line Thirty-three Reconstruction Cold-in-Place Road Recycling Report for Information. And the Perth County Council Award Tender two oh two one dash oh three one dash oh five to Lavus Contracting Company Limited for the tender price of seven hundred and fifteen thousand, five hundred and twenty-eight dollars, thirty-two cents excluding HST. And that council approved bylaw number thirty-eight fourteen dash two oh two one being a bylaw to authorize the entering into an execution of an agreement between the corporation of the county of Perth and Lavus Contracting Limited. Moved by Counselor Duncan, Second, but Counselor McDermott. Last chance for questions. Those in favor? Carry. Good. Now we'll move on to the next report. And that is our wheel loader report. And Bill, you're doing that again?
Yeah, sure. Thank you. So this one here is the re-tendered for the replacement of the wheel loader, which was actually a carryover from the twenty twenty budget into the twenty twenty-one capital. So we went out for tender on this and we requested from vendors three purchasing options, which included a outright capital purchase, a three-year lease option as well as a five-year lease option. The results of those tenders are tabled in the report here. There were five submissions, however, only two of the five met the specifications that we sought through the tender documents. We are recommending that we go with a five-year lease on this purchase. Under the financial implications section of the report, we kind of go through the benefits of leasing this piece of equipment, mainly regarding the the ongoing maintenance of it. We did a comparison of our wheel loaders that we currently have in our fleet. They're kind of at their early to mid-range life and we're in the neighborhood of around fourteen thousand dollars a year on maintenance for those pieces of equipment. Through a lease, the majority, if not all of those repairs would be covered by the leasing company. In this case, the recommendation for that is through Tormont Cat Finance. Yeah, and if there's any questions on this, again, John and I are here to answer.
Thanks, Bill. Questions? Counselor Wilhelm first?
Um, I guess I really question the fourteen thousand dollars a year for the maintenance alone. I question that because to me, that means we're operating too old of equipment. And maybe we should be looking at a ten-year lifecycle instead of a fifteen. And I, I just have trouble comprehending fourteen thousand dollars. You're talking over a thousand dollars a month maintenance on a piece of equipment that's and there again, that's why I say I don't know how old our equipment is, but it's obvious if we're spending that, to me, we're keeping the equipment too long.
Any response to that before I go to the next question? John?
Yeah, thank you. Through the warden, maybe I can offer some information here. Yeah, I know, that was one thing I think we noticed when we did this analysis is that's, that's an average over the fifteen years. And if I can speak, I, you know, since my time here at the county, we've gone through the three loaders. And, and I can say with all three loaders, at some point within the lifespan of that loader, we've done a major repair, which is, you know, some significant dollars. So, you know, in any one year, are we spending fourteen thousand? Not necessarily, but in any given year within the lifespan of these loaders, there is a significant repair. And I think one of the things we're seeing with, with these new loaders is, and this is something new, going to be new for us, is this loader will have a DEF system on it. And as we know with our tandem plows and things like that, that just means a lot more maintenance or repairs over the, over the lifespan of the, of these equipments. So we just think, you know, again, consulting with our mechanics, consulting with other municipalities who are leasing loaders, we recommend this five-year lease. Another thing, when we've had these major repairs to these loaders over, at times, the, the pieces of equipment are down for a significant amount of time. And through the leasing program, you know, they will supply another unit to replace it while it's being fixed if it needs it. So that's something that's been a problem in the past when, when doing a significant repair on a loader, certainly in the winter time, when it's greatly needed, that certainly affects our operations. So we're, this is why we're recommending the five-year lease. If you look over fifteen years and compare it to, to a leasing option, you're basically looking at around the same amount of dollars.
Thanks, John. Darrell, Counselor Hurley got a stand up.
Yeah, no, I, being familiar with the costs and service calls, I bet you it's probably five, six hundred bucks just to get a service truck out from Kamatu. They've been well over a hundred bucks an hour for ten, twelve years now. I think they're around a hundred and sixty bucks an hour now for service calls. So it does add up a click. I've seen the numbers. I shake my head for years. One question I have is maybe a preventive maintenance package, but only like at the two thousand hour interval or the thousand hour interval, will that help really protect us in the event of a powertrain failure? That way their hands are on it. They did the work. They're not that much actually per hour, if you figure it out. I'm just worried, you know, we better document well when you're dealing with these leases, when we're doing the services, just so that we're covered in the event of a failure, especially around the engines too, just to make sure. But it's something to look into maybe. I just wanted to put that out there, just so there's no fussiness or, oh, you didn't do this, oh, you didn't do that, show us the records. I just thought I'd put that out there. But yeah, at the end of the day, this equipment is getting more sophisticated all the time, complex and overall expensive to run. And who makes the most money is the person who never shuts it off and wears it out the quickest. But the days of keeping things for long, oh man, it haunts you. But no, thanks.
Okay, so if I read this right, there is a five-year, five thousand hour powertrain warranty on this, right?
Yeah. Yes, that's correct.
So how many hours do we average a year?
We average around four, a little better than four hundred.
So we're more than covered on that one.
Yeah, and then the, yeah, it's five hundred hours a year is the allotment for it. And then the, the routine maintenance frequency on the machine is also five hundred hours. So the, the fluid changes and filter changes and things like that will be done by our mechanics in-house at the five hundred, five hundred hour interval. But anything beyond that will be through CAT.
Okay, other questions or comments? Counselor Wright?
Thinking outside the box here, we have, we could buy it for two hundred thousand for, and keep it for five years. We're, we'd never have traded in a vehicle, I don't think. So would we get seventy-five thousand dollars for it in five years? Do we look into used ones? So, so I look at it as a business thing. We buy it for two hundred thousand. Maybe in five years, we've used it, we get a hundred thousand back. Right now, we're going to spend a hundred and twenty-five thousand on five-year lease. Maybe in five years we've used it, we get a hundred thousand back. Right now, we're going to spend a hundred and twenty-five thousand on five-year lease. Like, there's a ton of options. If I was a farmer, I would keep my tractor for five years and then trade it in and get two hundred thousand dollars for it. It's just another, um, a piece of, of stuff that you could do. You don't keep a car for fifteen years till it's worth nothing. You trade it in at five years and get a value back of it, but I don't know if we've looked at that, John or Bill. I, I hate leasing because you're just throwing money away. Right? You get nothing in the end, but I, what would our loader bring us, our used loader? Couple, five, ten thousand dollars for the next person?
I think the Komatsu loader, we would be probably looking to get around twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars, um. It, you know, it'll go out to bid, I believe is the process and then, um. Yeah, I would, I would expect it to, to fetch something in around that twenty thousand.
John?
And, and just further to that, when we sort of looked at the analysis of an outright purchase versus a lease. We did take into consideration sort of a value at the end of the lifespan for that loader, so we. We've kind of calculated that in, in, in the, in the comparison. Um, but to Counselor Ite's point, uh, we, we didn't really consider going out looking for a used loader. With this particular loader, it also, we needed specific attachments on it to, for our broom attachment. So we use this, uh, unit extensively in the, in the other, uh, in the summer. Summer portion of our operations for sweeping and things like that, so. Um, it was important that we spec, uh, a very similar unit and, uh. Yeah, there was, that was one thing we did not look at in this process was buying used.
Other comments or questions? Counselor Wright?
Just to follow up. I'm, I'm not talking about buying used. I'm talking about buying used and selling, buying new and selling used. If we could get a hundred thousand dollars for that unit in five years with only. You, you say four hundred hours a year on it, Bill? Four to five? Twenty-five hundred hours on it? We might find a construction company that'll give you a hundred or a hundred twenty-five thousand. It's just a business. It's just a different business idea. How to best use the money is all I'm saying.
I don't have a soul by new.
Counselor Hurley?
Yeah, I, the, the problem you'll run into there is they know the township loaders are in salt. And as much as our, our men, I'm sure try their hardest. Construction companies really frown away from anything that's been in salt and sitting in salt pits. I, that's my comment on that one. Um, but yeah. It, it, it's, we'll end up chasing pennies. I, I feel, but hey.
Counselor Duncan?
What, I just wondered what model of loader is this?
This is a cat, uh. Sorry, just give me a second here. It's a nine twenty-six M.
Yeah, the thing that, yeah, you're talking about buying new and selling used, but, uh. It is in salt all the time and people know that. It, it may not be beat, but it's going to look beat. Let's be honest. And you're also not adding in your fourteen thousand dollars a year in maintenance. Into that cost as well. So my question is, so at the end of five years, we're fully covered for expenses as far as keeping it up running. So why wouldn't you go out and just lease another one for five years? And you're never going to be spending money on maintenance. And my son is a mechanic and he tells me it's either going to cost you a thousand dollars or ten thousand dollars. There's nothing, there's no other figures in the range, so that fourteen thousand is probably going to escalate. Anyway, I have a motion here. Is there any other questions? Yeah, and our fleet reserve is low as in indicated in the report, so. Okay, I have a motion. Perth County Council receives the tender results two thousand and twenty-one dash oh thirty-three dash oh three. Supply of one year of one two thousand and twenty-one new wheel loader report for information. And Perth County Council Award tender two thousand and twenty-one dash zero zero three dash zero three. To Toramont Cat for the tender price of a five-year, sixty-month lease. At two thousand and fifty-four dollars, eighty-seven cents per month. Tolding one hundred and twenty-three thousand, two hundred and ninety-two dollars, twenty cents over the term of the lease excluding H S T. And that council approved by law number thirty-eight fifteen, two thousand and twenty-one. Being a by law to authorize the entering into an execution of an agreement between the corporation of the county of Perth. And Caterpillar Financial Services Limited. Do I have a mover? Move by Counselor Hurley, second by Counselor Duncan. Last chance for questions or comments? Those in favor? That's carried. Counselor Wilhelm?
Uh, just a comment. I would like to see our staff do a review of, I believe they said we have three loaders. So I'd like to have them do a review of the other two on hours and age. Because it's obvious keeping them fifteen years is too expensive.
On wheel loaders? Uh, can we get a resolution for that to explore the wheel loader situation? You're going to move that? And I got a second from Counselor McKenzie, so we're having a. Just a resolution here that staff look into our other wheel loaders and assess. The maintenance costs, et cetera, and the timeline at which we own them. And I got a mover and a seconder. Those in favor of that resolution? And that's carried.
Perfect.
And I'll be honest with you, I'm happy with leasing this. I think I'm the one that brought that up a couple, three years ago. Let's look into a lease. There's a lot of farm equipment gets leased now versus bought for that very reason. Okay, moving on. We have, uh, more tender results. And Bill, you're doing that as well, I believe, maybe?
Yes, I'll run through this one as well. Um. So this here is a tender results for road reconstruction, um, Perth Road one twenty-one, which is, um, from. Her, Perth Line seventy-two east, so in, in, uh, Millbank, northerly to, um, Perth Line eighty-six. This, uh, this, this was an inclusive tender, so it included all the construction components for that project, um, the concrete. The surface asphalt and the recycling and, and some other minor construction incidentals that go along with that. Um, the results here, um, include work that was included under the. Tender for the township of Perth East for a number of their capital real projects that were. Not only similar in, um, in location, but also in, um, project scope, I would say. So the results are listed there exclusive of H S T. And Brantco Construction submitted the, the low bid. The numbers are fairly competitive on this one as, as well. And I don't have much more to add to this, uh. Other than to note that there's a bridge structure on, within the project limits there that is also included in this tender. Uh, there's some rehabilitation work to do on that structure, so it will be done in conjunction with this project. Under the same general contractor.
Thanks, Bill. Questions for Bill on this tender? Pretty straightforward. Counselor Duncan?
Um, my question is, uh, for those of us that travel that road, we know the corner from seventy-two onto that road. There's been a considerable amount of potholes show up in that corner right before the bridge. Will that be repaired? Right from seventy-two over that bridge heading, heading north or like where does that contract start?
No, this, this contract, um, begins on the north side of that bridge structure, um. By about fifty meters, I believe that's. Nope, uh, Park Street maybe in Millbank, one of the little side streets between the bridge and seventy-two east that goes towards Cross Hill. And then in twenty twenty-three, I believe. The southern section of one twenty-one, um, is in the capital budget for their, proposed for that year. So then we would hook on where this contract ends and then go, um, south from there. Um, the radius, the turning radius and stuff for seventy-two east that goes towards, um. Animes and things like that, that, that radius will be cleaned up and, um, we'll go through the intersection there.
So we'll catch up those holes around the bridge then as they keep occurring then, I assume, eh?
Yeah, we'll do that through the, through the maintenance operations.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, did I see another hand up over there? No, must have been just something in the corner of my eye. Don't see other hands up, so my quick question is, I talked to John one day, is that works out to about eighty-four dollars? A ton in place? Is that correct? The asphalt?
Yeah, the, I, I don't have the unit rates in front of me. I believe the unit rate for surface asphalt under this contract was around eighty-one dollars a ton.
Okay, just so councils aware, last year we were in the high fifties. Am I correct, John? Yeah, he's nodding his head, yeah. So that's the difference in one year. Okay, uh, I have a motion here. Perth County Council receives the tender results. Slash road reconstruction Perth Road one twenty-one, line sixty-seven, line eighty-three. Structure one-two-one-one-two-six rehabilitation report for information. And Perth County Council Award tender two thousand and twenty-one dash oh three one dash oh four. To Brantco Construction for the tender price of two million, seven hundred and ninety-eight thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars. Nineteen cents excluding H S T. And that council approved by law number three eight one six. Dash two thousand and twenty-one being a by law to authorize the entering into. An execution of an agreement between the corporation of the county of Perth and Brantco Construction. Do I have a mover and a seconder? Counselor Casenberg, Counselor Wilhelm? Any comments or questions? Those in favor? Carried unanimously. Perfect. Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
And I think that maybe even covers our public works. Does, perfect. So we have a bunch of bylaws. Yeah, I know, but, uh, I think I said we were going to do another, other business, but actually, well, nobody says it council point. So we're going back to consent agenda items and I need to get my list out here. Okay. Consent agenda item five point seven. And was that Counselor Casenberg brought that up? Okay, Counselor Casenberg?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Um, I, I find myself, uh, interested in the implications. Of the A M O submission that is mentioned in this letter. And whether that has any impacts on our operations in Perth County with regards to long-term care. So I've, I've been reading the, the lengthy resolution from Halton Council. And thinking about what it was they're asking, I, I like to suggest that perhaps we need a, a brief summary. Report brought to this council pertaining to, um, the A M O submission and its implications in Perth County.
Okay, anyone else with comments on that? Council's wishes here. Would you like to see that? Do want everybody raise their hands at once? I see a nod up and down. Counselor Duncan? Counselor Casenberg, do you want to move that? Counselor Casenberg, and you want to second that, Counselor Duncan? Get a report back on this? Okay, perfect. Uh, last chance for discussion. There is going to be a bunch of change. Oh, Counselor Wright, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I, I did. It, when we're talking about long-term care, um. It's been three or four years since Rivera had five years to close Hillside Nursing Home. And we had a lot of uproar then, but nothing's gone on since and they haven't replaced it anywhere. I'd be as interested in, when you're talking to long-term care, where that project is going. Because we fought to have it stay in Perth County and, uh, I, I, somebody else could better me on the dates. It's been at least three years that they had five years to come up to all the standards of Hillside and, uh, I've never seen anything done there. Um, it was a lot to do with, uh, so that might be another thing on Todd's long-term care. Um, if it's suddenly the date's up and they go to London. See you later.
Other comments or questions? So exactly how would you like that worded, Counselor Casenberg? I'm going to ask you that.
Um, I think that we should direct staff to prepare a report on the implications of the A M O. Position paper on long-term care for, uh, operations of long-term care facilities in Perth County. Or by Perth County, maybe it's by Perth County, although to consider.
I would maybe put in Perth County, because Perth County is only spruce lodge.
Right, and that's why I was thinking to sort of cover Counselor Ite's, uh, collateral question, maybe it is, uh, uh, in Perth County. And I think that would be a useful service, by the way, to, uh, the lower tiers so that we come to understand. Uh, what, uh, that could mean for, uh, locations in our municipalities as well.
Okay, so that was the motion and Counselor Duncan seconded that. And I'm assuming we could get some assistance for staff through Peter Bull. And there is a group that get together. And Rod is aware of this. Uh, all the long-term care homes will get together and you're in person, have meetings. And perhaps we could get some information from them to make it a lot easier. Counselor Agus, you think that would be feasible?
Uh, yes, I do. I think that'd be a good idea.
Okay, so I have a motion on the floors, first, the second, those in favor? That's unanimous. Okay, five point eight. And that is the Lake of Basement with regards to capacity limits for restaurants in stage two. You brought that up? Todd, Counselor Casenberg?
Yeah, so, so this one I think is, is, um, a, a little bit more straightforward. Uh, they make a good case, I think. For, uh, not applying a, a broad stroke of, uh, of, you know, ceilings and of trying to make use of. Actual floor area for the purposes of determining, uh, number of occupants or, or users of, uh. Of restaurant spaces in particular and, and to me, um, that sort of capping, uh, always did bother me a little bit. Um, I, I think that it needs to be related to, uh, that floor area. Uh, unless there's other data, so I, I would move a motion of support, uh, on behalf of that particular letter. Um, indicating this council's, uh, uh, agreement with the notion that restaurant, um. Restaurant capacity is, should be, uh, set based on the floor area of the restaurant.
Okay, so I have, uh, Counselor Casenberg has made that a motion. Do I have a seconder for that motion? That would be Counselor Doug Ite. More chance for input or discussion on that before we go any further. I see some laughing. Uh, I see some shaking their head.
Doug Ite never had his hand up. It was Doug Kellum.
I said Doug Kellum.
He looked a lot alike. Looked a lot alike.
Did I say Doug Kellum? I apologize if I didn't. Sorry, Doug. Okay, uh, I'm only going to make one comment on that. I can't say I, I disagree with your support. But I have a good friend that works in a restaurant here in the city of Stratford. And every person she waited on in the weekend came from a red zone area, nothing local. So I, I'm just making that a point. Uh, if you want to finally end this. Maybe there are some reasons there are restrictions, but I have a motion on the floor. Counselor Casenberg is going to have it seconded by Counselor Kellum. Those in favor? Okay, I got to count. Two, four, six, eight, ten. That is carried. Had to do some math there. Okay, thank you. We're going to move on. Five point one one. That was Counselor Hurley.
Yeah, okay, great, thanks, uh, through you, uh, Warden. Yeah, same here, uh, the city of Sarnia. They have their concerns with the color coding as well. They talk about how businesses have done so much. They have big area. And the capacity limits throws them for a loop and it makes it tough. Um, having some close friends in the restaurant business, certain has been trying times big areas and. In and out of lockdowns is, is, is very hard on a person. It's hard on people in general. Nobody seems to know where we're at, but I, I'd like to support this as well, that it needs to be on square footage. And much similar here to Counselor Casenberg, just. I, I, they make some good points here, I feel, that we can support as well. Thank you.
Okay, we've got Counselor Herdix made his comments. And I take it your mention of that a motion for support. So do I have a seconder for that motion? Counselor McDermott has seconded that. Chance for input or comments on that? Not seeing any hands. Uh, one comment is they just went back into lockdown.
Yeah, well, I, I guess if you're looking for a comment, uh, it's interesting that all of these requests are coming from areas that are actually. Getting worse instead of better, you know? I don't know what to take from that, but.
You can read a lot into it or not read into it. Anyway, we have a motion on the floor. But Counselor Hurley, I had seconded by Counselor McDermott, that we support the one from Sarnia. Those in favor of that motion? That would be two, four, six, eight, ten, twelve. Carrie? Okay, five point one two. Counselor Casenberg, that was you, I believe? Or not? And that's the carbon tax one, right?
Sorry, and, and uh, thank you, Mr. Warden, and, and perhaps it's not the ideal time, given that the climate change coordinator has left. The employee of, of North Perth, but um, I, I think, I mean, you know, there's a uh. An opportunity for us to try to understand the implications of the, the carbon tax in Perth County. And um, obviously, uh, some effort has gone into studying this in Norfolk County. And expression of concern has been raised and an approach of policy approach has been suggested. Um, I find myself and, and again, you know. Cautiously saying that it would be lovely if we could have a report or some kind of um, of uh. You know, task brought forward that gives us some more information about uh, the implications of the carbon tax. Uh, in Perth County, given our dominance in agriculture.
Okay, uh, Counselor Agus.
Excuse me, I guess the impact on the farmers is that they're paying carbon tax on their uh. Their fuel to dry their corn, their, their tractors, our fuels going up um, a whole lot. Now, I thought the government was already looking into this, but it still wouldn't hurt for us to support this. That it is being looked into some more because um, we have a bush, they're not paying me any carbon tax to have that bush and those trees. And I thought that's how it was gonna work, but apparently not.
You're not getting the credit for that. You're not getting the credit for your crops either, and they're probably the biggest absorbers of carbon going. Anyway, Counselor Wilhelm can tell you the numbers, cause we had this discussion on Tuesday night. What's the carbon tax per liter?
Uh, diesel is a little over eight cents and April one, it goes up uh, two point six eight cents per liter.
So that's the exact increase. So we did have some correspondence by the grain farmers there and um. Shoot it, uh, Borzen? Josh Borzen? So perhaps we could get some information through Josh Borzen. And the grain farmers and they can give you some, I would think, some pretty reasonable. Uh, effects of how this affects farming. If that's okay with council, Counselor Wilhelm?
I, I think that's great, and I think if we could go one step further. Um, and get a clear understanding. How. Charging, I'm gonna pick on eight, over eight cents a liter on diesel fuel, how that reduces carbon? And. Worst incentive. Uh, to me, it's a tax grab and that's all it is, and no one's been able to show me. How it's gonna reduce carbon and, and improve climate, and that's where I really like to see some answers.
Okay, uh, having a con, other comments? Counselor Casenberg?
Just, uh, you know, further to uh, our, our sort of general thinking about this as we talk about the opportunity here. Um, for me, as I said, I, I think what I would like to structure is a resolution that. Um, doesn't necessarily support the resolution from uh, that we, we see in our package story. I've lost the uh. The name of the organization, Norfolk, thank you. My brain, um, but uh, uh, that actually um, does a little bit of local research too. We, we need to find out. You know, how many, like, what are the economic impacts on Perth County of this tax? And even if it's crude numbers uh, beyond the, the, the costs per liter and so forth. I think that could be a, a useful uh, first step towards us creating a position or a statement. On where we stand on this.
Okay, and actually, I believe the grain farmers have got some of those numbers. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Hurley, Counselor Hurley?
They, they've, they've got quite a bit of stuff compiled, actually.
And it's not just your tractors, it's your drying, it's everything. It's, it's, it's from one end of the crop cycle to the very opposite end of it. It isn't just one section of it.
So it does sound, Mr. Warden, like we have um, at least a, a, you know, a basis for beginning our work. Um, and uh, you know, if we can extend it, uh, or if it's perfect already, great, let's just bring it forward to this council. So we can look at that and consider uh, what kind of uh, you know, statement or policy. Uh, recommendation we might make on this on behalf of our farmers.
Perfect, so we'll have staff look into that. And they can get some people to supply numbers of the costing, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And I actually agree with Counselor Wilhelm, that maybe we should find out where these actual carbon taxes go to. If they do come back into our area or. Not, I'm thinking not. Uh, and we should actually follow the carbon tax from front to back. Is that okay with you, Counselor Casenberg?
Yeah, again, my, my focus, yes, again, my focus is on Perth County.
Yeah, but we'll get it within Perth County.
Yep.
We tried to get it within Perth County. Uh, Counselor Hurley?
Yeah, one last thing there, yeah. The, the Perth Federation has compiled some data on that. So we'll, I, I'd recommend, regional to Perth Federation, the Ontario uh, grain. And yeah, uh, Counselor Casenberg's really touched on a good, like, let's see the average effect. You know, let's see where it is and then finish up, roll it off. Okay, you got the money. Is it coming back to Perth County or is a percentage of it would be need to? Yeah, but yeah, let's really focus in on Counselor Casenberg and that, that's dissect this down and show.
So. The motion will be to bring back a report. On the effects of the carbon tax on agriculture in Perth County. And to also investigate where the carbon taxes actually ends up going. And being redistributed. How was that further word? That good of you, Counselor Casenberg? He's got a thumbs up. I had a second for that. Counselor Hurley? Those in favor? That's unanimous. Perfect, moving on. Five point one three. This is for the Left-Hander Society, I believe. Uh, cannabis and was it Todd brought that up? Is it Counselor Casenberg? Okay, Todd, Counselor Casenberg?
Yes, apparently I'm a nuisance today with regards to consent agenda. My apologies, colleagues. This one is interesting to me, uh, not because necessarily there's an impact in Perth County, but. I think that the statement of principle pertaining to um, the, the approaches to, if you will, uh, regulating and um. And monitoring and enforcing uh, with regards to cannabis are, are relevant to all of us. And uh, and so I, I'm looking at this one and thinking, well. You know, maybe there's an opportunity to express some support because some of our municipal colleagues are dealing with this issue very actively. And are obviously quite frustrated with uh, the current interactions they're getting. Uh, and support that they're getting from the federal government uh, on this one. So um, you know, I, I guess. I'm gently saying while it may not be our issue, it's an interesting one that um, that we may wish to. Uh, at least support in, in principle, the, the resolution that has come forward from uh, the Brock municipality.
Okay, other comments or questions are actually, so are you making a motion to support them, Counselor Casenberg?
Uh, yes, I would do that.
Okay, do I have somebody who's wanting to second that motion? That would be Counselor Hurley. Last chance for input or comments or questions on that resolution. Okay, so that motion is to support the township of. Township Corporation of the, yeah, Township of Brock on their resolution. Those in favor? And that's carried. Perfect. I think that, have I got all the consent agenda items that? Perfect. Well, that's why they're put there. If you want to discuss them, you're allowed to pull them, so it's no big deal that you pulled out that many. Uh, we go a lot of months, we don't have anything come out, so. Okay, we're gonna move on to bylaws. I believe. Actually, no. Yeah, anything else at council reports before we go to bylaws? Just in case I missed something. Counselor Kellum?
Yes, through you, the warden. Last night we had our uh, Stratford Perth Museum meeting and a, a comment came up about. They're wondering where we are with regards to uh, re-transplanting the trees that have been removed. Um, if we could get something back on that in the future, that would be great.
Okay, uh, we will, we, that'll go to Public Works, I believe.
It will, we'll follow up.
Okay, we will follow up on that. Counselor Kellum?
Okay, thank you very much.
Anything else? Counselor Casenberg?
I'm, I'm sure that all of us around this table, um, Warden are excited by the announcement from Swift. Uh, that came earlier uh, uh, this, in, in the cycle between meetings and uh. Um, I, it, it's my opportunity to sort of formally draw it to the public's attention, those who are, who are watching. That the Swift Rural Broadband Project has announced the funding of five projects in Perth County. That's a very exciting uh, move. It's certainly inadequate to the task. There are still many areas of Perth County. That are not going to be serviced by uh, fiber broadband or fiber or other broadband technologies. But um, it is absolutely progress and I think we should be quite excited by the um, by the results of that procurement process. And by the effectiveness so far of Swift in, in getting shovels in the ground and people connected. In the earliest uh, projects that have been announced, so um, uh, we're seeing uh, some exciting progress here on that front.
So just for your information, that was a hundred and ninety-four kilometers of fiber. Even though when I told the beacon it was a hundred and ninety-four, they said approximately two hundred, but it's a hundred and ninety-four. Uh, sure it was. Anyway, uh, so the results of that tender which was announced this past Tuesday. So there's fiber going into Prep, West Perth and Tucker Smith won the bid for there. Uh, North Perth, which was Whitman's and Perth East, which was Morningside. So uh, further to Counselor Casenberg's comments, yes, it, it's not enough. They're basically gone in and they picked all the low-hanging fruit off. Elmerie, I believe Shakespeare, a couple places in West Perth. Little Grove was one of them. There was another two smaller municipalities. Uh, North Perth got Counselor Casberg, can you tell me exactly what that was again?
Yeah, there was a significant um, fill-in in Elma Township east of Highway twenty-three. Um, uh, through the North Perth borders to Listwell essentially. Um, so that was a significant project and also a small vill, uh, project that the villages. Um, in just uh, east of Listwell on Highway eighty-six that Whitman won, the Elma Township project was from Morningside.
Okay, I knew Morningside had got a bunch. And correct me if I'm wrong, I didn't see Atwood on that list, did I?
Atwood has been done for a while, actually, Mr. Warden, uh, even though I have sporadic problems with delivery, um, Atwood has fiber to the home.
Really? Cause I struggled, I honestly didn't think you did because of your connectivity issues.
I don't want to comment further, thanks.
Okey dokey. Okay, any other comments or Counselor Kellum?
But the village of Britton sure did win.
They got it this time, I believe, did they not?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's part of that east of uh, twenty-three Elma Township uh, um, fill-in that they are doing, which is, which is wonderful.
But unfortunately, we're still not up and down the concessions and that will be phase two, right, Todd? Okay, I have a bunch of bylaws if no one else has anything. First one being bylaw, and this deals with the tender results for the uh, Colden, Colden Place Recycling. Bylaw three eight one four dash two thousand twenty-one be read a first, second and third time. And finally passed the eighteenth day of March two thousand and twenty-one. Moved by Counselor Wilhelm, seconded by Counselor McDermott. Those in favor? That's carried, and the next bylaw is to do with the lease of the wheel loader. Bylaw three eight one five dash two thousand twenty-one. Be ready first, second and third time and finally pass the eighteenth day of March two thousand and twenty-one, moved by. Counselor Hurley, seconded by. Don't everybody put their hand up at once, Counselor McDermott? Those in favor of that motion, and that would be carried. And the next one deals with the tender results for the asphalt in place, and that is, whoops. Hang on, three eight. One, we gotta make sure I got the right one here. Yep. Uh, bylaw three eight one six dash two oh two one be read a first, second and third time. And finally pass this eighteenth day of March two thousand and twenty-one. Moved by Counselor Casenberg, seconded by Counselor Agus. Those in favor? That's carried. Uh, notice of motions. Other business? Counselor Agus?
Uh, we had a doodle poll, I believe, in last week of when we're gonna have our code of conduct. I wonder if that date has been picked yet?
So through the order, we don't have a date picked at this time. Um, I think I'm still waiting for a couple of responses, but. The April eighth looks like the date that it would probably be uh, based on majority, but nothing confirmed at this point.
Okay, thank you.
So tentatively April the eighth. Okay, uh, announcements? I don't see any, so next here is. Uh, I have a motion that Perth County Council move into closed session at approximately. Twelve twenty-eight. For ten twenty-eight, sorry. In accordance with section two, three, nine of the municipal act. Uh, two thousand and one, to consider a matter pertaining to labor relations. And a matter pertaining to legal advice. Moved by. Counselor McDermott, seconded by Counselor Wilhelm. Those in favor? Perfect, we're going into closed session, so we have to do some rearranging. So we'll have about a ten-minute break or less. And we'll reconvene. Okay, bylaw thirty-eight seventeen, two thousand twenty-one being a bylaw to confirm. The proceedings of council of the corporation of the county of Perth and its regular meeting held March the eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Is ready first, second and third time and finally passed March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Moved by. Counselor McDermott, seconded by Counselor Wilhelm. Those in favor? Scary. Motion to adjourn at twelve eleven. Counselor McKenzie, Counselor Hurley. Those in favor? Scary, thank you very much.